Loving you. I've made up my mind to live in memories of the lonesome time. I can't stop wanting you. It's useless to say, so I'll just live my life in dreams of yesterdays. Those happy hours that we once knew. Though long ago, they still make me blue. They say that time heals a broken heart, but time has to steal since we've been apart. I can't stop loving you. I've made up my mind to live in memories of the lonesome time. I can't stop wanting you. It's useless to say, so I'll just live my life in dreams of yesterdays. Those happy hours. Those happy hours. That we once knew.
Also, I'm gonna touch a little bit on, everyone knows that it's been out there that the report on the so-called leaky counselor is out. Well, I was in contact with the first district attorney, Mr. Ed Karkasinas, and he informs me that it stays confidential because it is sort of like an ongoing, it's closed at this point, but it's sort of like an ongoing investigation if someone comes forward, they could reopen it. So at this point, I know it's frustrating, I know people wanna know what's in it, but as a town council, we can't release it, the police chief can't release it, the town manager can't release it. So that's where it sits. It sits in confidentiality, and that's all I have to say.
83 Pine Dell Street. It's about the issue you raised, the leaky counselor thing. I have some several questions to ask you because this could generate into an apparent cover-up. What, what language did they use in the report to you? Have you seen one?
First of all, the report was given to, it was addressed to the Southbridge Police Chief, okay? And we got copies of it and we're not, it's confidential, so I'm not gonna speak.
What citation and law authorizes that confidentiality?
The document is actually a document produced by the District Attorney's Office, so if you have any inquiries in regards to the document, I would request that you put those through to the District Attorney's Office.
I don't think it's necessary because it's in your, it's in your venue now. Could I have a redacted copy?
You're gonna have to make a request to the town manager, a formal request.
I'm gonna make a formal request now that I receive a redacted copy, take the names out if you have to, and I would like to see a redacted copy and I'll pay for it.
You could submit the request and it will be forwarded to the District Attorney's Office for processing.
You'll receive an email tomorrow. I just wanna comment that this, as Counselor Logan had said to you several weeks ago, will set a standard for the future. If you can hide behind a confidentiality screen, then there is no, there is no government here. You've gotta change that. I don't believe that there is, in fact, a case in law that allows that. Maybe the chief could clarify that, but will, I would like to see the copy anyway, we'll go forward there. Thank you.
Mr. Sotelli, I just wanna say, I'm as frustrated as you are that it cannot be put out there. I called Mr. Karkasinas and he told me straight up, it's gotta stay confidential. So that's where it sits. I, you know, I, my hands are tied as the chairman of the council. There's nothing more I can do. I can give you his number if you'd like to call him.
Sure.
I can forward that to you. I don't have it with me, but I do have it. I can call you with it and give you that number, you can talk to him.
I think you should be, more or less from a political standpoint, doing something about it because it becomes a, a sort of a leaky gate thing. I don't think you want rumor and innuendo to continue. I think what you want to do is get this thing out public.
Personally, I believe it should be out public.
Yeah.
But that's not my, my say, my call here.
Well, you're the head of government and I disagree with you.
I am the head of government, but the DA is in charge of that report. It was their report.
All right. I'll have to do what you can't do.
I will get you that number, you can call him. Town manager, effective August 19, 2011 through August 18, 2014, do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, I just have, in reviewing the contract, when we initially looked at this in subcommittee, this was as an amendment to, amendment number two to the existing contract, which I didn't think was the appropriate way to address this. So the manager did go back and put it together, but they still see some things in it that have me concerned. In the first whereas, under that measure, it says an extended three years, I believe it should be an additional three years, because we're going on with a new contract. The other thing is, I, when I look at, just under item F in section four, it says, "All other portions of this employment agreement as originally dated July 14, 2008 and amendment number one dated September 3, 2009 not listed above shall remain in full force and effect." When I take that statement in consideration with section four, A, B, C, and D, it kinda gets a little, it can get a little tenuous as far as I see it, and the reason I say that is this. It's my understanding that items A, which says that the salary of $127,050 between, up to August 18, and then B is a 2% increase on that, and then the subsequent paragraphs have a 1.5% increase, a 1%, and a 1%. If the contract, if those, those percentages were included in the amendment to the very first contract, then when we extend and enter into this contract, this means this is a new set of those percentages, as I interpret that, which means that it could be interpreted as saying we owe an additional 2% because we're entering into another contract. So I just wanted to make sure that we get that particular section of it clear, that it should be, those percentages should be on whatever the existing salary is now. We should've started, we should be starting fresh. So I would put a question through you to the manager. In item A on section four, the $127,050, is that your current salary or is?
No, when I started in 2008, that was the salary that I started at. And what, in, in the original contract, it actually had 3% and 3%. So all we've done in those A, B, and C is correct to reflect what actually happened in reality. So really, D, E, and F are what would happen moving forward, A, B, and C is just what's already transpired.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, because the way I see this is, we already had the first contract and amendment to that. What this is, is a new contract. So these numbers should be starting from where they are now and then going on forward to 2014, not be a restatement of the old contract, the original contract, because we're really entering into a new three-year period contract.
Well, my original contract, I, it was a request of the council, I was gonna have a separate contract, the current one that I have would go through to August of, August 18 of this year. That one would expire and then a new contract would kick in.
This one.
Right. And what I wanted to do, since we were gonna consolidate the two amendments that I had proposed, we made a, kind of a uniform one that covers the history of where we've been and then what we have going forward. So I don't, you know, I'm not gonna ask for more money, I mean, it is what it is in terms of the first three years, but my original contract did need to be amended because I didn't get 3%, I got two and I got one and a half. So we just really updated that, and when we did amendment number one, we actually updated the first year of that to reflect what I actually received. So it's really just notation purposes that those three years are in there.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up. Okay, I understand that is, but we have, even though we would execute this today, the actual pickup in starting point for this contract would be August 19 of 2011.
Correct.
Okay, and contracts can do that. I just did a contract in my job that, in that manner. The historical thing is, the original contract and the amendment would be historical, but this should be a ground zero, new set of numbers in those categories because when this contract kicks in, that's when those numbers take effect. You don't have to cover ground you've already covered in the other contract because that contract is in, is not gonna be in perpetuity, it's gonna have a definitive end time, and this one has a definitive start time and a definitive end time. So this should be a fresh new set of numbers, starting from the point of where you're going to be on August 19, 2011 onward to August 18 of 2014. Thank you.
You all set? Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's confusing for me is, because when I look at this and I try to get what the final number we're gonna be at by the time we get to the last year of this contract, based on that original number, 127,050, I can't really, it looks at, it's a six and a half percent pay raise, but based on that bottom number, I come up with 135,308, but I really can't determine what the true number is because it's not worded right. So what I'd like to do, I don't wanna belabor this too much, but I really think it's right that because we are getting into a contract, that we get it right for the town manager's sake, we get it right for the town's sake, that I'd make a motion, we just, if we could put this off until the next, the next town council meeting to just clean up this to, to get it done right. Let's put that in the motion.
So you wanna postpone this till the next meeting, so are we gonna send this back to general government? Is that what you're gonna, you're requesting that?
Right. And to work with the manager and general government to get it right.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Mr. Town Manager. Counselor Regis had something to say.
No, I completely disagree.
So you wanna go forward with it as written?
We have sat on our hands for too long about this issue.
Okay.
My opinion, and, and we need to get, this is gonna be done one way or another tonight. That's, that's my feeling on this, my very strong feeling. Get it, let's get this done now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Logan.
When we have to ratify the town manager's contract six months prior to August 19, is there going to be another town council meeting prior to that?
I believe it's February 18.
February 18.
February 18.
So we'll have one more meeting before then?
Correct.
And it seems like it would make sense rather than, since the vice chair's got questions, Counselor Regis had some questions, wouldn't it make sense just to schedule a general government subcommittee meeting as early as possible next week? Meet with the town manager, get these issues resolved so we have a clean contract to vote on at the next meeting?
Counselor Regis.
If, if the way the document is presented is an issue, can we at least vote on those, I don't even know if we can do this, can we vote on the extension and the percentages and the dates, and then the, the presentation of such be addressed afterwards? Can we at least do that?
I don't, I don't wanna vote on something that's piecemeal on this, I wanna vote on the full thing.
Okay.
Counselor McDonald.
I was just gonna say what you just said, so thank you.
Okay, so without any other counselors, I'm gonna let the town manager speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little bit frustrated because originally I had a contract, I had an amendment, I put amendment number two that really made two changes. One was extended it three years, it did put in the percentage increases with going forward three years. Those percentage increases per another section of the contract are tied to what every other non-union member gets, so that these percentages will change as we go. And I was asked, well, we don't wanna do a second amendment, we wanna just do a consolidated document that reflected, you know, the, the elements of the agreement. I put that together. What I would suggest, and I understand the vice chair's point, I will put in for items B and C what the actual pay is that I'm getting now. I have nothing to, nothing to hide, I just wanna get this thing moving forward, and I would just ask that, you know, it's been a long time in which this has been coming. You know, I haven't made an issue that, you know, I should've had a review a year and a half ago. You know, I just, you know, I think you have to treat people with some respect sometimes, and I would just ask, you know, if, if it's a question of the numbers, I'll take out the percentages and put in the actual numbers for where I am, but, you know, this is a fairly straightforward concept of what we're trying to do here. So, you know, that would be my, my request to the council that, you know, what it is, is it's a three-year extension of my existing agreement with a 1% increase per year going forward, with other language in the contract that adjusts that to whatever the other management people get in the community. That's what, that's what this is. It's straightforward and simple. So if, if it makes more sense, and I can understand the confusion, I'll put in the actual dollars in lieu of the 2% increase, put in the actual amounts for last year and for the current fiscal year, and maybe that would be a resolution to this thing.
Counselor McDonald.
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, that if I was purchasing a major purchase like a vehicle, or if I was going in to buy property, or if I was going into a contractual agreement in any way, shape, or form that was confusing, I would not feel comfortable signing it under those terms and circumstances.
And, and I would agree with you. This is a very important document. I wanna see this, I wanna see a hard copy of it written the right way. I don't wanna vote on it piecemeal, I'm not comfortable with it. If you wanna go, if the counselors feel that they wanna go forward with it, vote accordingly. Counselor Nicola.
Thank you. Through you to the, to the town manager. Mr. Clark, when did you, when did you put this together? When did you have a chance to put this together as you were requested to do?
It was after the, the subcommittee meeting.
Okay. So last, the last time the chairman and the vice chairman met with you on a Thursday night, was this ready?
Excuse me, vice chairman was not there.
I'm, I'm speaking to the, to the manager. When was, was it ready for, for him to look at, for the chairman to look at?
Actually, I think we met on Thursday and we finished it just after we met.
So it wasn't ready when the mayor, when the chairman met with you for that meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, you're supposed to go through the chair too.
I did go through the chair.
I didn't hear it.
But you did, yeah, I did.
I didn't hear it.
Pay attention.
I just wanna straighten you out on one other thing while I have the, at the attention of you. You're speaking to counselors while other counselors are speaking?
As you do.
I wish you would refrain from that.
And I wish you would refrain from that as well, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
State your point of order.
I would like to point out that Rule 13 of the Council Rule says, "Every member shall respectfully address the chair, confining himself or herself to the question under debate and avoiding personalities. No member shall speak out of his place without leave of the chairman, nor shall any member be interrupted by another while speaking except by a call to order." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Point of order, well taken. Okay. Roll call on this agenda item, unless someone else has something to say.
Yep, I've had my hand up.
Go right ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanna say that I was at that meeting and we did discuss the contract to be a new three-year contract concurrent with the existing contract, and I remember that we were very clear as to how we wanted it stated so that it would come up and be very easy to vote on, or not easy, because nothing's easy in a contract, but at least be very clear. And, and I'm not quite sure where the semantics are getting mixed up here in this line, "All other portions of the employment agreement as originally dated," and then you got your dates, "not listed above shall remain in full force and effect." To me, it's very clear, except for the two dates listed, everything else is in full force. I don't, you know, you're 1% versus the actual number, it's a little math, I think it's just a stall. So I think it's, it's acceptable in its form. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
I'm sorry, what's?
We're voting on, on the agenda.
On this?
Yeah.
This actual, okay, yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Lozo?
No.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Logan?
No.
Four yes, four no?
Motion does not pass. Ratify the permitting 14 now. Both accept the proposed resolution to the open meeting law violation regarding the motion to add an agenda item and subsequent motion to nominate and vote on vice chairman at the town council meeting of 12/6/10.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
State your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dear Chairman Lozo, I'm gonna read a memo that I put together yesterday and I'm bringing to the meeting tonight. So I put it in the form of a memo for everyone. Dear Chairman Lozo, I'm writing this memorandum through you to the members of the town council as a written record of my thoughts and analysis on agenda item 14 and the associated documents on the town council meeting agenda for Monday, January 24, 2011. I chose to write these thoughts out and submit them during the meeting due to the complexity of the situation and the nature of the accusations. I want these thoughts and considerations preserved for the sake of a complete record. This agenda item is the result of an open meeting law violation filed with the town clerk's office against the town council as the public body in general and myself, Chairman Lozo, and counselors Logan and Vandal in particular, by the other four members of this public body, counselors Livinggood, Regis, Nicola, and Clements. The complaint alleges that at the December 6, 2010 meeting of the town council, the four of us violated Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 23, and that we added an agenda item and voted on the vacancy of vice chair. The complainants cite Section 20B of that Mass General Law, which states, "Except in an emergency, in addition to any notice otherwise required by law, a public body shall post notice of every meeting at least 48 hours prior to such meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. In an emergency, a public body shall post notice as soon as reasonably possible prior to such meeting. Notice shall be printed in a legible, legible, easily understandable format and shall contain the date, time, and place of such meeting, and a listing of the topics that the chair reasonably anticipates," emphasis added, "will be discussed at the meeting. As to the matter of whether or not there was a violation of the open meeting law by our body, I offer the following facts to be considered. I point your attention to a phrase of the last sentence of Section 20B in the law, 'reasonably anticipates.' The meeting in question was properly posted and an agenda of, with a list of topics were presented in accordance with the law. It is true that in preparing the agenda for the December 6 meeting, Chairman Lozo had not placed election of the vice chairman on the agenda. At the previous town council meeting of November 29, 2010, the first meeting after the passing of the late counselor Lauren E. McDonald, Agenda Item 5B called for the election of a vice chair, a position required by the Southbridge Home Rule Charter. The election resulted in a tie vote and a failure to elect a vice chair. Chairman Lozo stated during that meeting that we, the council, could, would have to wait until there was a nine-member council to elect a vice chair. During the December 6, 2010 town council meeting in which there was a quorum of the town council present, Counselor Logan made a motion to add an agenda item, election of a vice chair. Counselor Logan's motion was duly seconded and discussion on the question of adding the agenda item was held. Counselor Logan made a good case for why the vacancy should be filled. I agreed with his logic and added my thoughts on the topic as well. It was my opinion then, as it is now, to ensure the succession and continuity of government, it serves the public interest to have the leadership structure preserved and defined in accordance with the charter. While it is true that Counselor Regis was not present at the meeting, there was a quorum as required by the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, Paragraph 2-5-3, which states, "A majority of the members of the council shall constitute a quorum for the conduct of business." A majority of the councilors present and voting voted in favor of adding the agenda item. This is not an unusual occurrence and is in keeping with past practice. Of note are the following meetings: July 19, 2010, in which Agenda Item 7D was added in order to appropriate $15,000 to repair Engine 3. A more recent occurrence was at the January 10, 2011 meeting in which Counselor Regis made a motion to make a vote, take a vote of support of the council to the newly confirmed DPW director, which was accepted with unanimous consent, and I will add tonight's addition of Agenda 9A. During the discussion to add the agenda item, Counselor Logan stated that he had not talked to Chairman Lozo about making the motion to add the agenda item. Chairman Lozo stated that Counselor Logan did not tell him he was going to make this motion. After all, why would Counselor Logan, who heard Counselor Lozo's statement regarding not having an election for the vice chair until there is a ninth counselor, think that the chairman would put it on the agenda when he said he wouldn't? On the Massachusetts Attorney General's website, there is a section of frequently asked questions. One question asked is, "May a public body consider a topic at a meeting that was not listed in the meeting notice?" The answer provided is as follows: "Yes, if it is a topic that the chair did not reasonably anticipate," emphasis added, "48 hours before the meeting. If a meeting topic is proposed after the meeting notice is posted, the public body is encouraged to update its posting to provide the public with as much notice as possible of what subjects will be discussed during a meeting." Based on the statements of Counselor Logan and Chairman Lozo, and also taking into consideration the conversation Chairman Lozo had with Counselor Regis, that he would not put it onto the agenda, it is clear to me that Chairman Lozo did not intend to put it on the agenda and in fact, did not put it on the agenda. It is also clear, given the reaction of three of the four complainants who were present at the December 6, 2011 meeting, that they too did not reasonably anticipate the introduction of this motion. That being the case, unless one wishes to challenge the veracity of the chairman, for which proof would be required, there is no basis for this complaint. Therefore, based on these set of facts, one must conclude that there was no violation of the open meeting law and the complaint is without merit. In regard to any promise made by Chairman Lozo that he would not put something on the agenda until all counselors are present, this would be a clear violation of the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, and as I will show later, a violation of Robert's Rules of Order. I believe Chairman Lozo was well-intended in discussing and promising Counselor Regis he would not put it on the agenda, however, he has no authority to make such a commitment. Paragraph 2-5-4 of the Charter states, "In no instance shall it be required that all members of the council be present at a meeting to allow the conduct of business. Election of a vice chair is the conduct of business and therefore is not excluded from this provision." Having discussed this issue of the alleged open meeting law violation, I would like to now discuss the recommended resolution proposed by the complainants. Before continuing further though, I think it's important to note how and why Robert's Rules of Order are applicable to the conduct of business by the town council. The town council rules adopted April 18, 1974, and amended several times, the most recent being March 12, 2007, in Rule 18 states, "All rules or procedures not considered herein shall be governed by Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure." The resolution recommended by the four complainants states that they would like the motion to amend the agenda be rescinded and the election of the vice chairman be rescinded in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, page 107, basically making the election of the vice chair null and void. While the complaint does not cite the exact paragraph, I assume they're referring to Paragraph 3, which states, "No main motion in order that would conflict with or that presents substantially the same question as one which has been temporarily but not finally disposed of, whether in the same or preceding session, and which remains within the control of the assembly. Because the issue at hand is the election of an officer, this paragraph is not the appropriate application of Robert's Rules in this instance based on the following set of facts. At the November 29, 2010 meeting, the council, of the council, there was an agenda item to elect a vice chair. The subsequent tie vote resulted in a failure to elect a vice chair. While the Charter is silent on what actions to take in the event of the death of an incumbent vice chair, it is reasonable to assume that a vacancy in an important leadership position must be filled." That is exactly the point Counselor Logan made. In accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, page 429, lines 30, entitled Providing For Completion Of An Election, Robert's Rules states, "If an assembly wishes to adjourn when an election is incomplete, an adjourned meeting should be provided for. Even though there was a failure to elect, the body did not provide for such a meeting." Robert's Rules addresses that in the following manner. "If such an adjourned meeting is impossible or impractical, and the organization will hold another regular business session before a quarterly time interval has elapsed, the election is completed at the next regular meeting." Counselor Logan's motion to add the agenda item and the subsequent election of the vice chair occurred at the next regular meeting held on December 6, 2010, keeping with this provision of Robert's Rules of Order. Even if the motion to add the agenda item is rescinded, the election is still valid for this reason. As to the matter of the election of the vice chair, there is no provision in the town charter or bylaws providing for the removal of the vice chair once elected. In the absence of this guidance, Robert's Rules becomes the guiding document based on Town Council Rule 18. Robert's Rules is clear, that if the charter, bylaws, or other documents and rules of an assembly do not provide otherwise, an election to office is final. On page 430 of Robert's Rules, line 5, "Time at which an election takes effect," Robert's Rule states, "An election to an office becomes final immediately if the candidate is present and does not decline, or if he is absent and has consented to his candidacy." Furthermore, in accordance with Robert's Rules, the complainant's recommended action to rescind the election and expunge the minutes cannot be performed. to rescind the election and expunge the minutes cannot be performed because of the fact that it deals with an election of the vice chair. This citation is found on pages 297 and 298 of Robert's Rules of Order, under the section entitled Actions That Cannot Be Rescinded Or Amended, which states, "The motion to rescind and to amend something previously adopted are not in order when the following circumstances," under the following circumstances, "C, when a resignation has been acted upon or a person has been elected to," emphasis added, "or expelled from membership or office, and the person was present or has been officially notified by the action. From the facts available, it is clear that there is no open meeting law violation, and that the recommended remedies would violate both the charter and Robert's Rules of Order. In effect, this agenda item and the proposed motion made by the complainants are out of order, and I ask the chair to rule accordingly." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
(laughing). Oh, sorry.
I don't think there's anything funny here, Counselora.
It's actually sad.
That's quite a point of order, Counselora. With that said, after hearing that, I'm going to rule this. It'll be my ruling that Agenda Item Number 14 is out of order.
(applause). Thank you.
So therefore, this won't be taken up.
I'll remind you what the AGO said about public bodies. Oh, I'm out of order, Mr. Lazo.
You're out of order, Counselora.
Yeah, you were out of order when you got elected.
Counselora, you're out of order!
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, could've said...
One more wise crack, and I'll have you removed.
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Go ahead.
The intent of this whole purpose was to take up with the body the concerns that the four complainants had. This body has done so. So what this has done, this action in the ruling by the chair, has opened up this motion for you to take it further and file your complaint with the Attorney General's Office. That's what it does. So I think it's fair to point that out.
Thank you.
I think it's fair that other people get to respond.
Counselora, do you want the floor?
I had my hand up, and you never recognized me.
Say, "Mr. Chairman," and I will recognize you.
It's hard to do that when you're banging the gavel.
You're really getting to me, you know that?
Mr. Chair.
You really are.
Great.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to remind you that we are all the public body, and it is for all of us elected officials to take up this violation, not just the vice chair. That's all I got to say.
It was a point of order, and I ruled on it.
I'm sure they'll find it very interesting.
Mr. Chairman?
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 14. Both to accept a proposed resolution to the open meeting law violation regarding information read into the record at the town council meeting of 12/13/10.
Second.
It's Item 15, I'm sorry. We have, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none, roll call.
Counselor Clements?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Livinggood?
No.
Counselor Logan?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
No.
Counselor Regis?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Eight no?
Motion doesn't pass. Agenda Item Number 16, Counsel's Forum. Counselor Clements?
Well, first, I'd like to send thanks to Sergeant Dinghy and his group of basketball boys. I apologize for not mentioning it the last meeting. Sometimes we get a little ahead of ourselves with announcements, and I would just like to recognize Sergeant Dinghy and his group of basketball players who came and helped to remove decorations a couple of weeks back. It was a great help. We had about a dozen or so junior high boys, and it was really a testament to community service, and I thank them very much for helping to do that for our town. I would also like to note that in the minutes, it reflects that we did not actually add an agenda item on voting, on taking a vote of, whatever we called it, for support, excuse me, yes, a vote of support for the new DPW director. Basically, we asked if we could take a vote and show that, we didn't ask to add an agenda item, nor do we vote on adding an agenda item. We just sort of asked that we would vote on a show of support, and we kind of did. It may have been illegal, though, but we certainly did not add an agenda item. I would also like to point out that I think a few rules were broken according to the conduct and decorum during meetings paperwork that we have here. Refrain from, let's see, refrain from speaking adversely, refrain from reading from reports or notes at length. I think that was broken tonight. And other than that, I think it was a very bad violation here this evening, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the AG's office has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Logan?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Vandal?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Livinggood?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just, everybody be careful if we do get the snow, they're saying. It's not going to be a mess, and I know the DPW does their best, but it only, you can only put so much snow in so many places. So be careful.
Thank you, Counsel. Point well taken. Counselor Nicola?
Nothing.
Thank you, Counselora. Counselor Regis?